Good evening. Adequate public notice of this meeting was provided by the Secretary of the Board on May 14, 2023, to Holman Tribune and to the Clerk of the City of New Brunswick. The time and location of this meeting and all meetings of this body are posted in City Hall, 78 Byers Street, New Brunswick. Mr. General, roll call.
This is Dr. Caldwell, Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. Ortiz.
Here.
Mrs. Seawood.
Here.
Mrs. Solis.
Here.
Mr. Spencer. Ms. Ferella. Mr. Adorno.
Here.
Ms. Sevilla. We have a call.
Thank you. Uh, can please stand for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Constitution of America, the Constitution of the United States, and to the Constitution of liberty and justice for all.
Reminder, the next regular monthly board meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 17, 2023, beginning at 7:00 PM and in Broderick High School Auditorium. Right now, we have a presentation, the Spring 2023 Statewide Assessment Results by Mrs. Virginia Hill.
We're gonna begin with the Summer Program PBL Showcase first, and then I will follow. Is that okay, Mr. Adorno?
That works for me.
Thank you. And our Summer Program PBL Student Showcase will be presented by one of our science supervisors. Her name is Elizabeth Nunez.
Good afternoon, everyone. Muy buenas tardes. Thank you for being here today. Gracias por estar aquí el día de hoy. This summer, our students in grades 1 and 2, 3, 5, and middle school engaged in project-based learning experiences with all of these topics involving the, uh, a local and a global issue that we're engaging in here and experiencing having to do with climate change. Our vision to prepare, empower, and inspire our students was what drove our work this summer with our students in designing solutions for these local and global problems. Our goal today, as we engage in this presentation, is to really create awareness when it comes to climate change and really have conversations about the impacts of climate change in our local and our global community. We also hope to, uh, discuss how the New Brunswick Public Schools has addressed the climate change standards that has been mandated by the NJDOE. And we would like to also build more community awareness of the programs that we offer in our district to help our students engage in this type of learning. And to most importantly, celebrate our students and our teachers that are here today that worked very, very hard to make this happen over the summer. So this summer, we did have students from diverse backgrounds join us. We had our multilingual learners, ability diverse learners, a diverse group of students who worked towards the common goal of addressing climate change in our community and globally as well. And so, as we know, climate change is a, an issue that is currently ongoing. And this summer, as a district, we wanted our students to really be leaders in this particular area and design solutions to different problems. We connected the learning to the United Nations Sustainable Development Goal. There are seventeen of them. And throughout this summer program, we were able to tackle four of them with the support of our teachers and our head teachers, and of course, with the support of our families and our students that are here today. Project-based learning really allows students to engage in critical thinking skills, problem solving. These are all skills that are transferable and that we hope they use as they engage in their learning throughout the school year. Uh, grade K students in kindergarten, uh, really worked with access to healthier foods, and they talked about what's for dinner and how we can support each other in our city with having access to healthier foods. Our grade 1 and 2 students engaged in water quality testing right here, utilizing the water from the Rarleton River. And their driving question was, there is what in our water and how can we tackle the issue of clean water and sanitation? We also had our grades 3 to 5 students who looked at diverse ecosystems, focused on endangered species, and how we can help them with this issue. Our middle school students worked with food insecurity, again, having access, equal access to healthier foods. Uh, here's an overview of what our students in kindergarten engaged in, all of which, again, was driven with this question of what's for dinner and how can we have access to healthier foods? These are some examples of our projects with our kindergarten students. Outside, we have a few that you can take a look at as you walk out today. Here are a few other examples. Gardening was part of this process and also looking at how we can grow our own foods in our, in our backyard. With grade 1 and 2 students, again, they really looked at clean water and sanitation and, um, how they can tackle the issue of having access to clean water in our community. These are some examples of those projects. They're also displayed outdoors, outside. Grade 3 to 5, again, had the life science perspective, looking at the different living organisms in our city and how they can support them in decreasing the number of endangered species that we have. Here are some examples of the solutions they designed for this problem. And, uh, here are some other examples. We really were very intentional about having an art connection with the learning and having students utilize their artistic skills to express their thinking when it came to these issues. And here are some examples of how our grades 3 to 5 students did that. And then finally, we have middle school students look at food, uh, access, again, to healthier foods in our city. Uh, and they were able to also design some solutions for how we can grow our own foods and vegetables in order to provide everyone with equal access to that. And here are some examples of that. Again, there's an art perspective here that was incorporated. Uh, another very unique part of our summer program was summer bridge. So we had our, our ninth graders, uh, engage in summer bridge to provide a smooth transition from eighth grade to high school. And with this particular program, uh, emphasis was placed on having them develop these skills that involve collaboration, critical thinking, problem solving, working in teams, all of which are very, very important when entering high school and engaging in learning with other students. And we'll show you a few examples of that. Uh, mindfulness was definitely, uh, an important part of their experience. Um, aside from that, they also engaged in topics that involve climate change um, by looking at, um, the connection with math and science with these particular, uh, living organisms here. Here are some examples of the team-building activities that they engaged in over the summer to support them in that transition. Finally, we also had an opportunity to collaborate with Rutgers University. And our students in this particular program engaged in STEAM challenges, STEAM activities, which involved multiple content areas, creating a cross-curricular experience for them in which, again, they were able to problem solve and think critically about the world um, throughout their experience over the summer. We also have summer swim, and so we had about a hundred and eighty students who participated in swim over the summer. Again, engaging in a skill that is very important for them to have, considering that, uh, most of the world is water, right? So we gave them an opportunity to practice that skill and engage in that over the summer. We also did have, uh, the marching band, um, this summer, that, and they also engaged in this learning. Um, again, incorporating the arts in what we do with our students, and that's something that we've really emphasized and worked with over the summer with our marching band. Our students, uh, also, we also had a jazz band, um, this summer. We were very intentional, again, about having our students develop these skills and, and be able to express themselves artistically through music um, and, and use that to, again, propel them forward as they entered a new school year. And before we finish, um, I would like for our students and our families and our teachers to please stand so that we can recognize you for your great work this summer. A nuestros padres, a los niños, a los maestros, si pueden parar, por favor, para celebrar su puerta vamos allá. These are all of our students that participated in the summer program. And your progress, our scale, and so, we want to congratulate them. Thank you so much, students and teachers that are here today for the hard work of this project this summer.
Thank you for that presentation, and now, Ms. Hill.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I will be presenting the Spring 2023 Statewide Assessment Results. The assessments, um, we will be discussing today are the NJSLA, which is the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, the DLM, Dynamic Learning Maps, Access and Alternate Access. And throughout these reports, I will be sharing with you all of the performance levels for each of the assessments, the student participation, the assessment results, comparative and aggregated and disaggregated subgroup data, and we'll conclude with intervention strategies. The first assessment, um, I'm going to be sharing with you tonight is the NJSLA for ELA and Mathematics. The NJSLA uses these five performance levels that delineate the knowledge skills and practice students are able to demonstrate. In order to be scoring proficient, students have to meet level four or five to meet and/or exceed expectation. Here you see New Brunswick Public Schools' number of students who tested with valid scores in English Language Arts. That number is four thousand four hundred and eighty-six students. This is our data, district data, when compared to the state. When comparing Spring 2023 NJSLA English Language Arts, district performance percentages with the state performance percentages, grades seven and eight had the greatest percentage of students meeting expectations in ELA, with twenty-seven percent in grades seven and thirty-one percent in grade eight, with a lower discrepancy when compared to the state. New Brunswick Public Schools' number of students who tested with valid scores in NJSLA Mathematics is four thousand seven hundred and nine students. There are very few students who tested in Algebra II as NJSLA Mathematics is only administered to students in grades three to nine. When comparing Spring 2023 NJSLA Mathematics District Performance Percentages with State Performance Percentages, grades three had the greatest percentage of students meeting expectations in math, with twelve point six percent in grade three. Now you will see the data broken up by subgroups. In this data chart, you'll notice that the Hispanic or Latino, Black or African American, and economically disadvantaged subgroups performed similarly to the overall district population of students with valid scores. In Mathematics, you see the similar trend with the Hispanic or Latino, Black or African American, and economically disadvantaged subgroups, again, performing similarly to the overall district population of students with valid scores. Then we have the third assessment for NJSLA, which is Science. Science Reports delineates four performance levels to show knowledge, skills, and practices students are able to demonstrate. In order to be considered proficient, a student needs to score a three or four for proficient or advanced proficient. Students performing at a level of three and four are considered proficient or above. They are demonstrating their knowledge aligned to disciplinary core ideas and science engineering practices. New Brunswick Public Schools' number of students tested in Science with valid scores is one thousand nine hundred and twenty because the grade levels that are assessed in Science are only grades five, eight, and eleven. When comparing Spring 2023 NJSLA Science District Performance Percentages with the State Performance Percentages, students in grade eleven had the greatest percentage with eleven point six percent with appropriate understanding in science, with nearly twenty-five percent demonstrating partial understanding. When looking at the subgroup data in NJSLA Science Assessment, the Hispanic or Latino and economically disadvantaged subgroups performed similarly to the overall district population of students with valid scores. This shows a two-year comparison of NJSLA, ELA, and Mathematics from when it was administered in the Spring 2022 to 2023. Here we notice in English Language Arts, we saw an increase in grades four, five, eight, and nine. In Mathematics, we saw an increase in grades three, four, five, six, eight, Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. Students in grades five and eleven in NJSLA Science with the two-year comparison showed growth between 2022 and 2023 in grades five and eleven. We now transition into another assessment, the DLM, known as the Dynamic Learning Map. Students who are assessed or didn't participate in the DLM administration have significant cognitive disabilities and do not participate in the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, NJSLA. The four levels, performance levels that are reported are shown here, with levels three and four noted as proficiency. Here you're able to see how many students were assessed in ELA and Mathematics, which were forty-four, assessing grades three to eight and eleven. And then in Science, a total of ten students assessed at the grade levels five, eight, and eleven. Across all content areas assessed, at all grade levels, the greatest percentage of students were emerging in ELA grades three to five and Science grades five, eight, eleven. ELA grades three to five and Mathematics grades three to five had the greatest percentage of students at target with thirty-three percent. The students who participated in Spring 2023 DLM and were also economically disadvantaged had a higher percentage of students who were emerging for ELA grades three to five with seventy percent and a higher percentage of students at target in Mathematics grades three to five with fifty percent when compared to the overall population administered. Then we have ACCESS for ELs, which stands for Assessing Comprehension and Communication in English, state-to-state for English language learners. In the state of New Jersey, this is a requirement to assess all multilingual learners on English language acquisition in the following four domains: listening, speaking, reading, and writing. The ACCESS uses six proficiency levels that delineate the English language acquisition students are able to demonstrate. Students who score a four point five or above exit a language program and are no longer considered multilingual learners. The overall participation of students, multilingual learners in the district for Spring 2023 ACCESS was ninety-nine point seventy percent with a total of three thousand and four students tested. This table represents the total population of multilingual learners tested with the percentage of students who scored at each of the proficiency levels in grades K to twelve. Students in kindergarten have the greatest percentage of students at level one, with students in grades nine to twelve following. Students in grades two, three, six, seven, and eight had the greatest percentage of students at level three, which is considered developing. And students in grades four and five had the greatest percent, percentage of students at level four, considered expanding. This table represents the ability diverse subgroups of multilingual learners tested with the percentage of students who scored at each of the proficiency levels in grades K to nine. Due to the suppression rules, grades ten to twelve are not reported. This table represents the economically disadvantaged subgroup of multilingual learners tested with the percentage of students who scored at each of the proficiency levels in grades K to twelve. This table represents the Hispanic subgroup of multilingual learners tested with the percentage of students who scored at each of the proficiency levels in grades K twelve. Given that the total number of Hispanic students tested is two thousand nine hundred and eighty-four students, the proficiency levels closely mirror that of the total students tested. The Alternate Access for ELs. This version of the Access for ELs state assessment is called Alternate Access. It is administered to ELs with the most significant cognitive disabilities. Starting at the most basic level of initiating and moving along the continuum to levels two, three, and, and on, at levels P one, students start progressing toward the basic proficiency, proficiency levels noted in the access. At levels P one, P one, two, and three, students are considered proficient. In the second table, here, showing percentages of students scoring at each proficiency level, with A, three, or higher allowing students to exit the EL status, eighty-four point six percent of English learners with most significant cognitive disabilities were able to exit EL status. Because only thirteen students were tested, we combined the numbers of students at each grade level for each proficiency level to protect student confidentiality. Due to the number of students tested, the data for the economically disadvantaged subgroup has been suppressed. And the next couple slides I will show you, I know it's a little hard to see, but you'll see here the multi-tiered systems of support. So these are the instructional programs we have for each content area that we discussed tonight that was assessed, which is, the first one is ELA. Here you will see all the assessments that are given in ELA when we look at the trajectory of pre-K to twelve. And then you see the tier one, two, and three levels of support that are provided to students. So if students are struggling with tier one support, which is given to all of our students, if students are identified as struggling with the content, which are grade level content, then they are given additional supports with tier two instruction. That is in addition to tier one. And that's usually within the classroom as a push-in model. If students are struggling with tier two supports in addition to the tier one instruction, they are identified based on multiple measures, and then they're, they receive additional supports, which will be considered tier three interventions. Tier three is usually a pull-out model and is in addition to tier one and two supports. We have that broken down by each content area. And then we conclude tonight's presentation with the strategies. All of the strategies which are embedded into the multi-tiered systems of support, and just to highlight a few of them. An ELA intervention strategies is doing, pretty much presenting students and ensuring that they engage in explicit modeling and think alouds, making sure we continue to implement a foundational phonics program, which is multisensory, as well as not losing focus of the word study to ensure reading strategy skills instruction is taking place. We also push students to reason and elaborate on their thinking, not only in English Language Arts, but all content areas as they engage in meaningful discussions with their peers. And then there's also strategic conferencing with their teachers. In Mathematics, some of the strategies I would like to highlight is strengthening the conceptual knowledge in addition to the procedural knowledge. Making sure students gain an independent, are gaining independent strategies and are able to take over their own learning. Making sure they're making sense of the math and not doing just rote memorization. Ensuring that students are thinking, reasoning, justifying their ideas, going through the process, constructing understanding with repeated opportunities to reason about the same concept for mastery. And in Science, we continue to push an inquiry-based approach where students are exploring, examining, explaining how and why a scientific phenomenon occurs, they're designing solutions to problems, and again, student discourse for reasoning, pushing reasoning and constructing arguments while citing evidence. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mrs. Hill. We want to, item number four, I need a motion for the minutes of August 22nd. Second. Mr. General, roll call.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood. Mrs. Solis.
Yeah.
Mr. Adorno.
Yes.
Motion.
Thank you. Uh, we have superintendent report by Dr. Johnson.
Thank you. Thank you. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Good evening. As of September 2023, we've enrolled nine thousand two hundred and eighty-three students. Uh, for the month of August, there was only one positive case of COVID-19 and zero cases for students, excuse me, one for employees and zero cases for students. Just to be brief, we're very excited for the start of the 23-24 school year. I mean, just walking into schools and witnessing our dedicated staff and our enthusiastic students return to the classroom really fills us with much excitement and commitment, um, as we embark on another school year. However, we all understand that we have to approach this school year differently. Uh, but a with a purposeful and targeted approach to teaching and learning. And we, when I say we collectively, we all have to do our part to improve the social and emotional well-being of our students as well as the proficiency rates of our students. As just was demonstrated, we have a lot of work to do and we're gonna get it done this school year. From myself, the superintendent, to our district administrators and school administrators, from our teachers and our support staff, and from our parents and students, we need to do this work collectively. And as I said, we will get it done. And as a result, we will see an increase in our students' social well-being as well as their proficiency rates. There's no time to waste. On September sixth, we marked a momentous occasion with official inauguration of the Blakita B. Valenti Community School. The celebration brought together two hundred district partners, state and city officials, and district staff to celebrate the opening of a beautiful school that will educate many of the city's children for years to come. Later that day, we extended our warm welcome to the Blakita B. Valenti community parents and students during an open house, which drew the participation of over five hundred families and community food vendors who actually provided delights and treats to our families free of charge. We want to express our heartfelt gratitude to all our dedicated community partners whose collaborative efforts made this event a resounding success. And it's with great honor that I sit alongside progressive board members, who have foresight, fortitude, and commitment to the education of our children. I must say, mission accomplished. Thank you. As we embarked on this journey for the past four years. In addition to Blakita B. Valenti Community School, the new pathway middle school opened their doors to sixth-grade students for the first day of this academic school year. And again, as we visited those schools, it was great to see the radiant smiles and faces of our dedicated staff and students. During the next few weeks, school principals will be hosting back-to-school night for our parents and caregivers, which provides an opportunity for parents to meet their children, teachers, and to ask any question they may have. Parents can learn about the school curriculum, expectations, and other important informations throughout the academic school year. It's an excellent opportunity for parents and teachers to establish open communication and build a strong partnership to support students' education. Couple more bullet points in collaboration with Robert Wood Johnson, St. Peter's University High School, and A W J. Barnes Health. On Tuesday, September twenty-sixth, we will host a flu and COVID vaccine flu clinic for our students and youths ages three, excuse me, three to seventeen at Redyard School from five-thirty to eight o'clock P M. We will hold a second clinic on Wednesday, September twenty-eighth. And to register and schedule an appointment for this September twenty-eighth clinic, please call seven-three-two-two-four-seven-two-zero-five-zero. Again, that's seven-three-two-two-four-seven-two-zero-five-zero. And lastly, during the months of September and October, we are commemorating Hispanic Heritage Month, also known as Latin X Heritage Month, which runs from September fifteenth to October fifteenth. Throughout this period, and advancing equity for all students, we will be promoting diversity, foster inclusivity for all students and staff and members of our community. We wholeheartedly encourage everyone to actively engage in celebrating Hispanic culture, whether supporting Hispanic-owned businesses, embracing the rich melodies of Latin music, or exploring both physical and virtual museums, showcasing vibrant art and culture of the Hispanic world. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. May I have a motion on superintendent?
Second.
Mr. General, roll call.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Dorno.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. I would like to welcome and introduce everyone to our new student representative, Ms. Perez. And this will be her report.
Good evening. My name is Jalen Perez, and I will be presenting the student representative report. The twenty-two thirty-three and twenty-two twenty-four school year started off with a warm welcome from the mayor's office, school board, and community last week. Everyone was excited to be welcomed back to New Brunswick High School on the first Friday of the year. All fall sports are coming up and running. At the high school and middle school, we have football, boys and girls soccer, girl tennis, girls volleyball, cross-country, and cheerleading. All grade levels had their class meeting with Principal Rusnak and their vice principals last week. All classes met with their vice principals, counselors, support staff, and principal. Expectations were renewed as well as upcoming events during the school year. Back-to-school night is scheduled for Thursday, September twenty-first, twenty-two thirty-three, from six o'clock to eight P M. Parents and guardians are encouraged to come to the high school to meet their students, teachers. This concludes the student representative report.
Thank you, and welcome. Facilities report, Mr. Ortiz.
Um, facilities report, meeting, September thirteenth. It was a short meeting. The committee basically talked about the success of the new Blakita B. Valenti Community School. It was a surrounding success, as Dr. Johnson stated. And I don't wanna continue to repeat, but we had the family of the Valenti family there. We had a lot of dictators from city, county, Robert Wood Johnson and our related partners. As Dr. Johnson stated, the students did the tour through the, throughout the school. And at the end of the evening, we had the open house for the community, families included. Also, I wanna report that the installation of the traffic signals, traffic signs is expected to be in place by mid-October. We have paid forty-four point three million dollars to date. The July twenty-two thirty-three invoice is two point one million dollars, which will put us at a total of forty-six point four million dollars that we spent in this project. The August invoice is expected to be three point five million, which puts us on budget with this project. The other main project that we're doing at this time is the high school gym addition. The high school gym is unscheduled. The initial concretes have been poured. The eruption of steel structure is underway. We expect it to begin at the end of this month. The exterior walls and all the rest of the stuff will come closely follow. We plan to have the new gym substantially encased before the winter. This will allow work to proceed as scheduled. The gym is scheduled to be open for the summer of twenty-twenty-four. We have other projects in the summer that have all been completed. Roosevelt Gym, air conditioning and related roof repairs have been done. Gym floor removal and replacement at Livingston School has been done. Gym floor refinishing at McKinley and Paul Lobson have been done. And all the trailer removals at Lincoln Roosevelt and related parking lot have been done. And the parking lot have been paved. That's the report I have to give today.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. I will give the athletic committee reports. The fall season is up and running at full speed. High school sports, the high school sports are football, boys soccer, girls soccer, cheerleading, cross-country, girls tennis, and girls volleyball. The middle school has all of the same sports, and we are now providing transportation for the student athletes, grade six to eight, from the rest of the district. At the high school, there are over two hundred and fifty athletes with a combined twenty-two twenty-three GPA of three point oh in all of the sports combined. The boys opened up the schedule with four challenging matches, splitting them two to two with wins over St. Joseph's and North Brunswick High School. Both boys and girls soccer teams are undefeated at three-and-oh versus North Brunswick South Williams and Perth Amherst. The Brunswick's very own marching band is growing every day. In addition to playing at our football games, they recently performed at Rutgers this past Saturday for their band game. Also, Rutgers University has donated two thousand tickets to our New Brunswick Middle Schools to attend the football game versus Wagner University on September thirtieth. Play is smart is working with students on a regular basis to have all the athletes eligible to play sports and be graduation and college ready. Play is smart has also been getting our students and athletes involved in completing community service projects around the city. More tutors are being approved and after tutoring have begun at the middle school level on Monday, September eleventh and eighteenth at the high school, September eleventh at the middle school and the eighteenth at the high school. Winter sports registration will begin early October for basketball, wrestling, indoor track, and boat. And I need a recognition for the August report.
Second.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Ms. Varela.
Yes.
Mr. Dorno.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Curriculum and Policy Committee Report, Mrs. Seawood.
The, we don't have a meeting yet yesterday because we had to reschedule our meeting from last week. We had two presentations. The Ms. Nunes, the supervisor of science, gave a presentation regarding project-based learning activities that occurred over the summer. And the student projects are on display outside the auditorium. I hope you had a chance to look at them. If you didn't, please do so. I did get a chance to observe, and they were just so excited that their work was displayed. Project-based learning is empower students to seize control over their instructional experiences, make real-world connections, and problem-solve with a hands-on approach to learning. And I, the focus on creating awareness around climate change and its impact on our local and global community and how New Brunswick Public Schools is addressing climate change. And I'm sure the students benefited greatly. They were just so excited and will always, they are certainly on their way to learning about climate change. Will be able to carry that over and hopefully make a contribution to our society. Even as a kindergartner, you put certain ideas in their mind when they learn things, it comes back. So I was just excited to see it. The second presentation was the statewide assessment test scores. Needless to say, we had quite a discussion regarding the interventions. And our overall conclusion is we must improve. We must do better. We need a major attitude adjustment. And everybody needs to get involved and participate in the process. Instructional staff, students, and the parents. It's all hands on deck because this is critical. Third thing, we reviewed the resolutions. They're included on the consent agenda. And thankfully, we didn't have any new policies. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Seawood. Dr. Caldwell is not with us today, so I will be opening up for public comments. Just as a reminder, you are allowed to ask about resolutions during the public comment portion of the, of our meeting. Mr. General, do you have anyone signed up?
Yeah, Linda Stork.
Mrs. Stork.
She said she may not be able to make it. April Nicholas.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Hi, April McLaus, one-four-three, Sedan Street. First off, I wanna say I was very excited to hear the presentation of our, the hands-on projects around climate change education. I think that's really great. Glad to see that what's happening now is happening. And I think that there's, you know, always room to do even more on such a critical issue. Certainly would be curious to know the results of the water quality testing project. I think that's of interest to everyone. But I can speak for, you know, my own experience when I was in school, that the most valuable experience that I had was the hands-on projects at the school around sustainability, working on building, you know, pollinator gardens and reducing usage of single-use plastics. And I think that there's a lot of opportunities for those types of programs to grow in the New Brunswick schools as well. I am curious why there are so many board members absent on the first board meeting at the start of the school year? Just letting you know why.
Hi, can I speak to you?
Yeah. It just, you know, it seems like unusually low attendance for board members at this board meeting. And it certainly seems like a very important meeting, the first one at the start of the new school year.
I'll butt in as the board secretary. Everyone was notified in advance of their absence due to certain reasons, not all personal. You know, one may be at conference representing the board, right? So it's not just that they're absent just because they're absent. There's reasons for them being absent, and not all of them have to do with missing the meeting. They're actually doing things for the board.
Okay. And then I also wanna bring up a topic that I have brought up at these meetings previously that I think, you know, warrants another look, which is the policy around the public comments at these meetings and the fact that people are required to preregister in order to be allowed to speak at these meetings. It's happened quite a number of times that parents or students or members of the community have shown up here and tending to speak and wanting to share thoughts or ask questions of the board and have not been allowed to because they weren't aware of that policy. And, you know, contrary to what we've previously been told, the security guards, you know, have not been instructed to allow people to speak if they didn't sign up, even though that is a, you know, a reason, an excuse that has previously been given for why the preregistration policy is supposedly not dissuading public participation, but that has, you know, proven not to be the case. So I would encourage, again, the board to look at this policy or at least provide a genuine, good-faith reason for why it's in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. General, do you have anyone else?
Carlos Ramirez.
Please state your name and address, thank you.
Carlos Ramirez, reporter with New Brunswick Today. Good afternoon, board members. I just wanted to start off by giving a suggestion, especially when we have new people joining us for their student or their kids event. joining us for their student and or their kids event. If we could just, you know, give them a notice that, one, there is translation available, just because many of these people are the first time attending here, so they're not aware that there is translation available. And I think the other thing would be that when they do get an invitation for their um, kids that they're going to have a presentation or their work is going to be exposed, um, to do let them know if they intend to speak to the board, that they can do so by notifying, just because the invitation that was sent out for tonight's event did not include any notice if they intended to speak, what the requirements were. And the other thing I wanted to mention was if there is a way to just send out an email uh indicating the intent to speak at all the future um, public meetings that the board will have instead of sending the email one by one for each corresponding meeting. And the second, I mean, the third thing I wanted to bring up was the school uniform. I believe there was a clarification made on the uniform that black was not part of the dress code. I won't say what colors people should bring in. I do want to point out that um the high school students in particular are not even wearing uniforms as they're required to. Uh, it's kind of dumb in a sense to put it out that you can't even bring black just because black and navy blue kind of look the same if that's what they were had available or their um the funding their parents had or the money they had available in that particular color to just even meet the standard for this school uniform. I think that's fine, so I don't think there should be any changes on the color as long as looks similar or matches the color of the uniform has to be. So I think if we're going to be implementing black now being part of the uniform, I think we should make our rules more strict when it comes to high school students actually wearing a uniform, just because many of these board members walk around the hallways and I've personally been inside this school as a student during hours and nobody really wears a uniform. So it's kind of dumb to point that you can't wear black when nobody really wears a uniform to begin with. Um, the other thing was the question when the next parent-teacher conference are going to be happening? What dates?
There are multiple dates across schools. Principals have notified parents, so the different dates across different schools.
Okay, yeah, then the other thing was that there was some emails that are sent to parents in relationships to security or incidents that have brought security concerns or threats to the school. Um, is there a way for that, that the district can make that public to the general public as well in residence, not just the parents themselves when things like these happen, just because there have been some emails that go out only directly to parents and not the general public?
No.
Is that something the board would consider sending these to the general public and not just parents?
Not at this time, thank you.
I think.
Your time is up, thank you. Mrs. Seawood, you wanted to respond about the uniform?
Yes, thank you. Uh, Mr. Ramirez, I wanted to clarify regarding the uh policy change that we approved last month. That was after reviewing different policies. We um noticed that black inadvertently had been listed in our uniform policy. Black was never intended and was not originally listed when we implemented the school uniform. So it'll take, that's why we did the revision, because it was never our intent to include black.
So does that mean that this?
Mr. General, your time is up, Mr. Ramirez.
I mean, you've given opportunity to other people to speak longer.
Excuse me?
I was redirecting my comment to the board.
She answered one of your questions after your time was done.
I understand, but sometimes you let other members of the public speak longer than their minutes.
I'll give you one more question.
Okay, that was my concern. You know, with many things that were happening around the schools, some of these students are attending, at least in particularly New Brunswick High School that I see and have attended before. And at least as class of twenty twenty, I've seen nobody has worn the uniform, at least since two years ago. That was my concern, you know, nobody's wearing the uniform. We've had security threats, we've had incidents happening in the school. And if somebody was to come into the school again and like we had a breach before, not once, but, you know, I think if we, therefore, students who actually wear the uniform and the correct colors, I think that would, you know, distinguish who has to be in the school and who doesn't have to be in it, as well as them carrying their IDs at all times. It's just not happening in the schools.
I, I don't think you're going to find many of you that disagree with the fact that the uniform policy must be um enforced. Uh, your, what you're telling us now is something that we're definitely going to have to look into.
Yeah, just because it's not being enforced, even though it's under the
All right.
Code book, it's not enforced.
Mr. General, is there anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Ramirez signed up, Jacqueen Bonafia.
All right, please state your name and address.
Hola muy buenas noches. Mi nombre es Bonfilie Halkin. Um, soy parte de la comunidad, ex miembro de diferentes proyectos de la comunidad. Um, mi pregunta es, cada vez que una persona estamos aquí en público queremos hablar y siempre nos cortan las preguntas que queremos hacer porque nosotros como padres tenemos derechos para que ustedes nos contesten todas las respuestas que queremos sacarnos las dudas que tenemos.
So we'd like to comment that um as parents, sometimes we have questions and we'd like to ask these questions and we'd like to ask, um, to receive these answers.
Sobre el cambio climático, eh, es muy muy triste saber que nuestro cambio climático está al límite y creo que uno de los motivos que hemos causado nosotros es la comunidad y que estamos viviendo. Eh, mi pregunta es, ¿qué está haciendo la escuela sobre eso? Se han puesto de acuerdo con la junta de de la comunidad para lo que es limpieza y recycling porque vemos muchas mascarillas que anteriormente fue del COVID y todo está yendo al mar, a los ríos, lagos, y no estamos haciendo casi nada en eso.
So I am in agreement with.
Hold on, let her ask all her questions so that way she can get all her questions done, then we can answer, so we don't eat up her time.
Sí, también otra de las preguntas es, los padres que tienen niños eh con problemas de ADHD y otro tipo de de problemas eh de salud. A muchos de las escuelas no están viendo las notas médicas para los estudiantes y las limitaciones que hay a los estudiantes. Y eso pasó el año, bueno, casi en junio después de que terminó el año escolar, que hablé con la secretaria de Superintendente, Mr. Johnson.
So she's in agreement that the schools present climate change. Uh, she's also sad to hear that climate change is such an issue. She um would like to find out what it is that the schools are doing in order to create this um cooperation with the community in recycling and cleaning and helping clean up the uh city, especially because all the garbage goes to seas, uh, the sea, the lakes and rivers. Uh, the other question she has is related to parents with students that have ADHD and other health issues and then uh what are schools doing to pay attention to the limitations that the students have?
Hay muchos padres que están aquí y me alegro que estén aquí, pero muchos no saben el idioma inglés y eso quiero que ustedes pongan un traductor en público para que ellos sepan lo que están escuchando.
And and her last comment is that um she's happy to see that there are lots of parents here and she would like them to know that there are always translators available for them to participate in the meetings.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Solis, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I would like to address some of uh your concerns. Estoy muy agradecida que tiene cosas que quiere traer aquí a la Punted educativa. Es un placer verla usted y espero que cada persona que necesite traducción tenga los audífonos para poder entender lo que voy a decir. Uh, it is my pleasure to see this many parents here this evening. There are uh three main points that I heard uh you asked about. Uh, first and foremost was the climate change concern. Uh, anyone that has worn a light sweater in December here in New Jersey knows that there is a big problem with climate change in the world. So uh, our district is actually working uh on an annual basis to maintain certification with the sustainable schools. Um, criteria here in in the state. And we definitely have several things in place to ensure that our schools are doing as much as we can to be sustainable and to put things into practice to ensure that we are educating our students and our staff in ways that can be beneficial to our climate and our environment. Aside from that, I think it's important um to to know as a parent that there are a lot of things uh that you can do at home to educate yourselves and your children to uh make the world a better place. And you mentioned recycling, yes, absolutely, composting, another one, uh, buying things that contain less waste, absolutely. The second uh thing you mentioned, if I'm not mistaken, was the concern for uh your child with ADHD and something of a conversation you may have had with Dr. Johnson. Uh, we do not discuss uh individual students here uh at board meetings. I think it's important for you to follow up with Dr. Johnson if whatever matter was not resolved. And I think it's important for any parent here because uh this is one thing we just mentioned, we love our parents to be empowered. We want you to be here. We want you to know the process. And with a lot of back-to-schools happening this week, absolutely, it would be wonderful for the principals that are here to maybe make a note of it, remind your parents that, yes, there is a monthly Board of Education meeting. And if the parents want to come, they need to register. Send an email or call Central Office to uh the Board Secretary. Let, you know, let us know that you want to speak and we are more than happy. However, there is a um, an order of operations, if you will. So you need to keep in mind that before you come to the Board of Education, you should have already addressed whatever concern you have, whatever question. So what you'll see here in the uh agenda is that this is public comments. We're not necessarily here to answer specific questions, things like your, the matter of your child with the with the classification. We're not here to answer any type of personal questions regarding any student, yours or others. So those are personal matters. But uh, if you have a concern, you should speak with your child's teacher, speak with the school's principal, then take whatever other concern. If you feel that the principal has not handled their job appropriately, you reach out to Dr. Johnson, you reach out to Central Office. And the board here, we can listen to your input regarding to the, regarding the things that we're implementing, but we're not here to answer specific questions for your personal matters unless you feel that the superintendent hasn't handled that matter correctly. And at this point, I forgot the third bullet point. What was?
No es una situación personal, es una situación que muchos padres tienen. Y lamentablemente, en el, en la junta educativa de cada escuela siempre se cubre todo, porque yo, yo quiero, señora, perdón, no es mi intención interrumpirla, pero como mencioné, esto son tres minutos que se le permiten para hacer comentarios. Su tiempo ha expirado y si quiere la última cosa que quiere poner para yo poder darle la respuesta de lo que indicó anteriormente, pero no un tema nuevo. Um, creo que siempre abarcan las las preguntas, eso es, siempre pasa eso. Eh, pero una de las de las últimas cosas que está aquí en en este papel, que nunca lo hacen como debe de ser, ¿no? Este, mi pregunta es, ¿por qué no están trabajando mucho con la comunidad para sacar la violencia de los de las escuelas?
Okay, ese es un tema nuevo, como le acabé de indicar, es algo que ya ha pasado su tiempo. Gracias por venir y espero que puedan venir muchos padres más en el futuro. Thank you so much for coming. We appreciate your time and we hope that you can come back again soon.
Gracias y espero que los padres hayan escuchado todo lo que, lo que preguntamos porque es para ustedes, es la ayuda para ustedes.
Uh, Mr. General, do you have anyone else?
No, that's it.
We'll move on to the president's report. Um, I would just like to uh take Jacqueen and welcome everyone back to another school year. Um, I wish all our staff, students and parents a wealth of good luck getting through the school year. Um, if you're lucky, you've had little ones. Um, first day of school was very fun and interesting, a lot of tears, lots of clean away. Um, but I also want to highlight a lot of the good stuff that's happened uh during the first couple of weeks of the school year. Um, I'm a big, big community advocate. I love when um there's community events that we can highlight what's going on in the city, uh, what's going on in the school district. Um, just to name a few of the things that started the school year, well, um, we had the Rock the Block at Roosevelt School where over fifteen hun- well, approximately fifteen hundred kids got book bags. Um, it was a, it was much larger than last year's event. Um, when I got there, I got there right on time, the line wrapped around from Drift Street up Redmond Street, down Livingston and back around Waltham. So uh, and by the time I left, the line was still all the way up to Livingston Avenue. Um, so that was an amazing event. Uh, we had the opening of Dr. Johnson and Ms. Ortiz spoke about the opening of the Blanquita Valenti School, uh, which is an incredible event. Uh, it was great to see former board members there as well, um, with the current uh board members. Uh, and it was great to be there in the evening. I stayed around for the uh, the orientation, to see the parents and the uh, the um local businesses on French Street, uh, you know, co-mingling and getting to know each other and uh, kind of showing the families what's around in the area and uh letting them know that they're community partners as well. Uh, like I mentioned, the first day of school was very exciting. Um, there were, I think I bumped into Dr. Johnson at two or three schools uh throughout the day. Um, and last, but definitely not least, uh, we had two very um important uh flag raisings in the city of New Brunswick the past two weeks. Uh, two weeks ago, we had the first ever Puerto Rican flag raising. Uh, and then this past Saturday, we had the tenth annual Mexican flag raising. Um, all which coincide with the uh beginning of Hispanic heritage. So I want to wish everyone a fun and happy Hispanic Heritage Month. Uh, go out and enjoy some of the amazing culture in New Brunswick, uh, and the amazing food. Um, and that's it for my report. Uh, we are moving to the consent agenda and I will need a motion. Mr. General, roll call.
This is Medina Hernandez.
Yes, I'm staying from A, B, A, C.
So noted. Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spence. Ms. Varela.
Yes.
Mr. Dorna.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Uh, Finance Committee Report, Mrs. Solis.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Uh, before I give my my spiel here, I'd like to just remind everyone that September is Mental Health Awareness Month. And so as we all return to school, um, our workloads increase during this time of the year. There's a lot of activities. Um, twelve suicide is the twelfth leading cause of death in the United States. Um, it's a topic that we need to continue to normalize, continue to be mindful of, continue to be um just more caring with one another. So as we are in involving ourselves in all of our matters, I think it's important to just sometimes give a compliment, words of encouragement and to be positive with one of, with one another. Um, because we all have a purpose here on this, on this planet, on this plane. Uh, and aside from that, the Finance Committee along with the remainder of the board members did have a chance to review. did have a chance to review the Finance Committee report and, um, along with all the other members. So I'm asking for a motion to approve the Finance Committee report.
Okay. Second.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yeah.
Ms. Varela.
Yeah.
Mr. Dornau.
Yes, I have stayed on pages six and 16.
So noted, motion approved.
Thank you. Resolution for closed session. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10, uh, 10-4-6, provides that certain matters of a public body may be discussed, may be discussed in a closed session, and whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows: personnel matters and two matters of attorney-client privilege. Now therefore, be it resolved that the aforementioned, uh, four said subjects shall be discussed in closed session by this Board of Education and administrative staff at the minute of said closed session discuss, uh, discussion will be made available to the public when the reasons for the non-disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act no longer exist. May I have any motion?
Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Seawood.
Yes.
Solis.
Yeah.
Yes.
We are in closed session.